Thank you for everybody coming tonight to the regular city council meeting, November 13th. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes, October 23rd, 2017.
I've got a couple. At the bottom of page four, this is an easy one, that it says PACER study and it should be PAZER, P-A-Z-E-R. And on page nine, towards the bottom of the first paragraph, Councilman Kibble stated, we have never had, and it should add, exclusive agreement that required people to use a certain provider. That's all I had. Thank you.
I just have one thing. On page two, seems to seems, it's the same word but just spelled differently, so S-E-A-M-S should be S-E-E-M-S. And that's when, um, let's see, the very bottom of the first paragraph, it may not be a lawyer by any means, but to me it seems that the city...
I'll move the minutes as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move the bills.
I didn't get any either.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions.
Hey, Mary.
So this is kind of numbered funny. I guess there's two page threes, but on the second page three...
One's warrants or invoices, one's checks.
There's a few notations for HRC. Page three has 3,356, page four has 4,300, and page five is 1,900. My question is, what are the HRC invoices for? Take your time, I just threw that right at you.
Sorry, I'm still finding them. Are you looking at the, I've got a page three of seven and they're dated 10/19.
Yep, and that's for stormwater permit assistance?
Uh, yes. The city each, every so many years is required to submit a stormwater permit to the MADC. It's a very convoluted process and it takes a lot of time and effort and we've always worked with HRC to make sure that we dot all the i's, cross all the t's, so that we don't lose our stormwater permit.
Okay, so that's customary?
Yes.
Okay. And then page four? It's the very last entry, Water Asset Management Plan?
Okay, that's not on my page four. The Water Asset Management Plan is a requirement by the state that we complete a complete asset survey of our entire water treatment system and water distribution system.
Okay, is that something that is also customary for HRC to do, or is that something normally our water department handles without HRC?
It is something that's customary for HRC to do. They've also helped us complete the wastewater asset management plan that was required by the state as well.
And page five? It is the fourth entry up from the bottom. Interim license operator facility.
That would be the, if it's for HRC, the assistance they had in getting us connected with and signed up with Highland Treatment, who is our Class B operator currently.
So this is the bill for Highland Treatment to come in?
Yes.
As the B license? Okay, thank you.
I had a couple. Page six of the check register, in that large first bank, labor fees for repairs for stairs and FL flooring, I'm thinking, for Mark Crouch?
Uh, that was to fix part of the gazebo in the historic village.
Part of what?
The gazebo.
Oh, okay, alright. And it seems as though there was an awful lot of Plant Moran final bills.
That is all the audit final bills. We get the final bill and then it's divided up by all the different departments.
It just seems like there, I'm surprised that there were so many loose ends at the conclusion when we had...
It isn't the loose ends, it's the final billing for the audit. Once the council accepts the audit, they bill us the last amount of the audit payment that we've agreed on for each year. And each department is allotted a specific percentage based on how much effort goes into auditing that department.
I would have figured that was more contractual upfront.
That's how it's always been billed.
Alright, that's all I have, thanks.
I'll move the bills.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, certification of the election. Wait till this morning.
What, they're gonna say no?
It's too late.
If they do, you're stuck.
So as of today, the election was finally canvassed and certified by the Oakland County Board of Camisers, so I would like to ask Dan Pelchak to come forward. And they probably want to get their pictures, so if you want to stand here, they can take your picture. Okay, so just raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I, Dan Pelchak.
I, Dan Pelchak.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of mayor.
Of mayor.
For the city of South Lyon.
For the city of South Lyon.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Okay, so next is Glenn Kibble. Do you want to have this sworn in, or you want to set it to be sworn in?
I'm fine.
I hope you...
Thank you.
Case of the, raise your right hand. I, Glenn Kibble.
I, Glenn Kibble.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of council members.
Of council members.
For the city of South Lyon.
For the city of South Lyon.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Okay. So then we have Carl Richards. Repeat after me. I, Carl Richards.
I, Carl Richards.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of council members.
Of council members.
For the city of South Lyon.
For the city of South Lyon.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
(applause).
Hey, just raise your right hand. I, Rose Walton.
I, Rose Walton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of council members.
Council member.
For the city of South Lyon.
For the city of South Lyon.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Good luck.
Good luck, Glenn.
Thank you, Harvey.
Thank you, Harvey.
You're gonna sit down?
I think Carl's standing.
Was that right?
Thank you, Harvey.
Thanks, Harvey.
I'm not gonna sit, I want to turn the rest of the way.
You're gonna, are you gonna sit, or are you gonna sit in your chair?
We're gonna sit in our chair.
Well, Mike, it's up to you.
I'll, I'll make it.
You know, on the foyer.
Can you get my bag?
Yeah, where you want.
Yep, let's go. Okay. I'm right here.
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks again.
I'll grab a beer.
As it should.
Thank you.
No, this is where he wants to sit.
Well, there you go. You're fine.
No, just switch the name plate.
Yeah, just switch the...
It's Lisa's choice, whoever wants to sit where.
It's not my choice.
Oh, I thought it always was.
Okay.
Alright, are we ready to move the approval of the agenda?
I have one item that I would like to add in front of each of you is a copy of a proclamation for a tuba Christmas at the South Lyon Salem District Library. They would like us to go forward with that this evening, so that they have as much time as possible to prepare and advertise for the event. So I was hoping to add that to this evening's agenda, I just got it today.
So six on new business?
Yes.
I'll move the agenda, adding mayoral proclamation for tuba Christmas as new business item number six.
On second?
As amended. We'll move the agenda as amended?
Motion to support.
Motion to support.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. At this time, it is public comment. Anyone that has public comment, please come up and state your name and address.
William Powell, 204 University. I just want to be the first to congratulate Dan, Carl, Rose on a great election. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Am I chapped liver? Am I chapped liver?
Oh, sorry. (laughing). Yeah, you're old news.
Oh, my gosh. Hi, Joseph Kearns, 229 Lyon Boulevard. I just want to welcome the new council members, of course. And also, I wanted to invite everyone, and you have right in front of you, and everybody in the audience, too, to the Wednesday night event, which is the reception for the Quilt and Fiber Art Show. It's amazing. And it's six to eight, Wednesday, November 15th, and I want to thank Linda Robinson, Heather Montilla, Linda Graham, Ken Mahala, who did a fabulous job on all of the PR, the graphic design, and all of the quilt artists. They were just, they're just amazing and really trust us with their stuff, and so please come, it's gonna be really fun. And it's free and open to the public, and there's refreshments, too.
Thank you.
Oh, it's, it's at City Hall, right outside. Yeah.
Alright, so that's it for public comment. Now on to old business in downtown.
Congratulations, Mayor, new council.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Quickly, I have a report which I hand out, and I'm just gonna touch on a couple items and be open for questions. Just wanted you to know that last week I attended two different meetings on the future of tax increment financing for downtown development authorities. These are sponsored by the Michigan Downtown Association. There's legislation now which affects tax increment financing in Lansing, and it's certainly the funds that allow the DDA to operate, it's the funds that pay off the bonds for the parking lot. And I think we're in good shape, but there'll be some more transparency issues with how we record how we use those funds. The other item in Lansing is the historic tax credits. We're now, we've been talking the past year, there are five buildings being restored downtown. None of them are using tax credits now, but not to say that buildings in the future won't. And it looks like the feds have removed tax credits in both the Senate and the House bills federally. And so Michigan is proposing a state tax credit that's actually worth more. So we're gonna follow that. Right now, we've had two new restaurant and developers come in in the last two weeks, looking at not just restaurant development, but looking at the master plan in the area on Whipple Street, north of Whipple Street to the west, and then also North Lafayette to the east, basically between Detroit and the railroad tracks. There's some significant combining of parcels. The property owners have hired attorneys to talk, and so we'll see where this all goes. But it's exciting, because they're talking about doing major projects that are envisioned in the new master plan that was adopted last year. Ladies' Night Out, of course, Friday night, getting exciting. Plans are all in place. Parking shuttles will be running from the Salvation Army parking lot and from the Methodist Church to the south. They'll be dropping off at 17, North Lafayette, with the hotel open, so they wisely planned ahead to have parking shuttles available. Signage will be up throughout downtown where those shuttles pick up. The last item is at the hotel, the actual grand opening and press event ribbon cutting will be December 1st. It's a Friday, December 1st, at 10 o'clock. We'll get more details out in the next week.
Thank you.
That's all I have. If there's any questions?
I got a question. Bob, where it's called for that we rebuild sidewalks, in the downtown and in the outlying areas, what are the circumstances for rebuilding to qualify for some state or federal money if we use five-foot wide sidewalks instead of traditional four-foot wide sidewalks? Is there any difference in that? Can you get eligibility for helpful grant money if you put in wider sidewalks, like we have up at the Baker Park? Of course, that's eight-foot wide, that's, you know, but that's not, you know, quite in the downtown. I'm just, is there anything in that, okay?
Well, certainly there are funds available. There's no requirement to replace any of the sidewalks that exist in the DDA to go from four to five. Those are always matching funds, if you go after funds in the future. And you have to have enough money in the DDA's budget if it's gonna be funded by the DDA, and right now the DDA does not have those funds.
I understand, but is there any preferential guidelines that you know of, okay, that where a city of our size could get a break if we went to wider sidewalks while we're replacing the four-foot wide sidewalk?
No break, per se. It would have to be, the funding would work, it'd be more costly, obviously, but the funding would be the same as if it were four or five, it would just be more expensive.
Five-foot wide sidewalks are predominantly used for walking paths, trails, bike paths, things like that, because it allows for multiple vehicles to pass each other, and also, that's why our walking path is five-foot wide. Traditionally sidewalks only have to be four-foot wide because that meets the ADA requirements.
The city standard is five-foot, though.
City standard is five-foot.
In certain spots in town, four-foot is not adequate, okay, in my opinion, especially right out in front of us. Of course, it's the schools, because I talk to them, okay? And I said, can you trim that brush out there? Because on Pumpkin Fest Parade, it was so congested in front of the entrance out there, people were walking around in the sidewalks narrow to begin with, okay? And so that's just one example, and a close-by one. But there's other examples where the sidewalks are, you know, 80 years old in town here, and I'm just, I thought it should be brought up at least one time, if we could, any advantages or anything to it?
I think that's a, it's a question for capital improvements planning and the downtown development plan, something we'll look at in the future.
Okay.
Does anyone else have anything? Thank you, Bob.
Thank you very much.
Consider resolution to amend the 2016-2017 fee schedule.
This resolution would amend our current adopted fee schedule, which requires anyone replacing a water heater, either gas or electric, or a residential heating and HVAC unit, to get two different types of permits, which makes the cost prohibitive for many people. This brings the cost down on both of them by combining them into one fee for the replacement, and in the case of a water heater, it doesn't matter whether it's gas or electric, because they have to have both plumbing as well as either mechanical or electrical inspections. You've got two inspectors going out, doing multiple inspections, and the same with HVAC units, depending upon whether they're gas or electric.
I'm really disappointed by where, what the direction of this has turned out to be. If you remember when this initially had come up, I had polled around the local communities. Our neighbors next door is like $40, Brighton is 50, Plymouth Township is, or excuse me, Northville Township is 70, and Plymouth Township was 70 if you used a contractor that wasn't in their roster of known contractors. I just don't know why we're so far out of the realm of what our neighboring communities hold. The only one that's the same as this is Wixom, because Safe-Built is their inspectors.
Actually, Lyon Township is slightly higher at 110.
Well, that changed recently, because when I called them at that last time we had talked about this, they told me it was $40. And that's why I was kinda, that was the onset of me being dumbstruck. That doesn't change the fact that the other ones, unless every one of them had given me wrong information.
Not knowing who you talked to and...
Their building department.
I understand, but not knowing who you talked to, you asked me to meet with our building department, our building inspector, and I met. This was the fee that we came to as a reasonable amount. If the council wants to change that, that is your right as the council, because you do set the policy. But this was what we agreed upon as a fair fee for an inspection system and permitting system that requires multiple inspections by multiple people for what people see as a very small job, which really isn't, because if your hot water heater blows up, so does your house. So if it's improperly installed and inspected, it has significant consequences.
You're talking about multiple inspections. There would be one plumbing and one electrical, or one plumbing and one mechanical. So, I mean, you said multiple inspections from multiple services.
Yeah, because you have a initial inspection and you have a final inspection from both...
What on earth would the initial inspection be?
I don't know, I'm not a building inspector.
And I, I don't think that your account is accurate. There's going to end up being the one inspection from both of those entities. I just, I'm, I can't vote for this at $108. I just think that's way too high.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just was gonna echo some of the same concerns, just because this came up a couple months ago, and I wanted to see where we were in comparison to local communities. I know you said Lyon Township is higher, but in comparison, what about other areas?
I didn't talk to the other areas. I went off of the recommendation of the building inspector.
To that point, the building inspector, did they give, did he give an exact reason why it's 108? Like, what was the reasoning, the basis behind it?
It was based on administrative fees to issue the permits and the inspection fees.
Okay. So just to clarify, the replacement residential heating slash HVAC is $108, correct?
Correct.
Then the second fee, replace water heater, which is a totally separate thing?
Correct.
It's also $108. So both of those are separate?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Joe?
My question is, how much is Safe-Built, they charge us for these fees, right?
Correct.
Okay, so how much are they charging us?
They get 75% of our fees.
Okay, so it's proportional...
The rest goes to our administration. It's proportional.
Oh, it's proportional, okay. So how many fees do we, how many people are requesting hot water tanks in a year, approximately? Are we talking 50, 100? Because what I'm getting at is if it's only a handful or a small volume, yeah, I agree, maybe we should lower it, because it's essentially not that much money that we're talking about. I mean, I'd much rather lower it and make it easier on our residents than, and maybe miss a few dollars in collection, than make it unreasonable and not consistent with what other communities have. So that's my question, is how many?
I don't know, I would have to go back through the building department records. I could have provided that information if I'd had the question in advance, but...
No, and I, I'm sorry, I didn't think about it till now, so I guess...
And that's fine.
And that's kind of where my, my brain would be heading, is if it's, I mean, either way, even if it's only 50 or 100, we're talking, maybe lowering it to, from 108, 108, down to, let's call it 100 total. You know, I, I think that maybe help our residents a little bit with, with their checkbook.
With the concerns the council has, perhaps we should table this and bring it back after more information is gathered, based on your questions.
Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The point that I think Joe is making, and one that I would like to sort of emphasize, is that this particular permit, whether it's any permit that it is, it's, it's on the revenue side of the budget. So I think anytime that we are looking at eliminating any kind of revenue from the budget, I personally would like to see what they call a fiscal impact. It may not be great, it may not be a lot, but if only four of these were issued last year, and we generated X amount of money, but we made a lot more money in another area, then maybe the fiscal impact of reducing this to 102, or 99, or 98 would not be as great. But I'm a little hesitant to, given the condition of the budget, to manipulate some of these fees until I get a better feeling for the budget and for, I'd be more willing to look at this fee structure when we deal with budget issues than I would do with it now, sort of set this on a bookshelf and deal with this when the budget comes around. But I'll, you know, whatever council wants. That's just my two cents. Thank you.
I got a question.
Carl?
Lynn, this is for the benefit of the residents, this is strictly single residential houses' water fee, inspection fee, not like a multiple...
These are replacement. If you have a house and you have to replace your hot water heater, there is a permit and a fee involved. If you have an HVAC system and you have to replace it, there is a permit required and a fee. We don't determine when permits are required, the state building code does. We only...
year, and we generated X amount of money, but we made a lot more money in another area, then maybe the fiscal impact of reducing this to one oh two, or ninety-nine, or ninety-eight would not be as great. But I'm a little hesitant to, given the condition of the budget, to manipulate some of these fees until I get a better feeling for the budget and for, I'd be more willing to look at this fee structure when we deal with budget issues than I would do with it now. Sort of set this on a bookshelf and deal with this when the budget comes around. But I'll, you know, whatever council wants. That's just my two cents. Thank you.
I got a question.
Carl.
Lynn, this is for the benefit of the residents, this is strictly single residential houses' water fee, inspection fee, not like a multiple...
These are replacement. If you have a house and you have to replace your hot water heater, there is a permit and a fee involved. If you have an HVAC system and you have to replace it, there is a permit required and a fee. We don't determine when permits are required, the state building code does. We only determine what the permit fees are.
Okay. This doesn't apply to, like, restaurants with three-hundred gallon water heaters or anything like that on the bottom of...
They fall under commercial, which I believe falls under a different fee structure.
Okay, all right. Understood. I think we should have it tabled.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to postpone this until the next city council meeting in order to allow some more time to pull a impact study and get the figures for how many hot waters have been pulled, permits have been requested, excuse me, and delay this until the next meeting.
Second.
Discussion, please.
Mary.
Would it be unreasonable to ask for our building inspector to come in and speak? Is that, that's...
It wouldn't be unreasonable, but I just got an email about his being on vacation. I want to make sure he is back. He will be back, then I'll ask him to attend.
Excellent, thank you.
I'd like us to, actually, I would have polled other communities again, had this packet been out on Wednesday, or on Thursday, what was typical. Unfortunately, on Veterans Day, nobody was answering their phones, so...
Did we, did we get a second?
There was a second.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Call the vote.
Call the vote. Call the vote.
All in favor.
All in favor.
There you go.
Aye.
You should just summarily ask for anybody against as well.
Yeah. Anyone against?
All opposed.
Thank you. New business? Appointment, mayor pro temp.
So, so part of the city, I don't...
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
The city charter requires the council, upon new election, to elect from its membership a mayor pro temp. If you give me just a moment, I can try and find that language. Four-point-two A, at the first meeting, the council, following each city election, the city shall organize and elect one of its members to the office of mayor pro temp. Mayor pro temp serves in the absence of the mayor. Instead of the mayor, this is four-point-two C, or in the mayor's absence or disability to act. He shall succeed to the office of mayor in the case of a vacancy in that office, thereby creating a vacancy in the office of mayor pro temp. The council shall fill any vacancy in the office of mayor pro temp, but until such vacancy is filled, the senior member of council, from the standpoint of continuous service, shall act as mayor pro temp.
Well, I would have to say, because of the circumstances, and things not being settled until, all right, up against it today, I would welcome any sort of discussion or nomination from any of our members. Go ahead, Mary.
I would like to nominate Glenn Kivell. Councilman Kivell has been on council the longest, I think it's almost two decades. And just because of the experience that he's had, and with that experience comes quite a bit of insight, I would recommend, that would be my recommendation to council, from my perspective. Thank you. Do I make the motion, is that how, should I?
I would phrase, I would put it as a motion.
If nobody comes in.
Should I phrase that as a motion, then?
I would.
So procedurally, how do we do this, if there's other recommendations? Do we vote on? Discuss it? Vote on each person, or we vote as one and each person gets a vote? How does that work? It's not very clear in the charter, it just says council shall nominate pro temp.
Well, if there's a motion and there's no second, then it would end up just going back to discussion.
Right, but if there's somebody else who wants to do it...
The question that arises, whether, under the provision where, so is this the, so should the nominated council member participate in the vote?
As I recall, in the past, they've had, they have...
I don't recall on this one. I have no recollection of whether, I thought it was rather un, non-eventful, there appeared to be agreement.
Dan, or Mr. Mayor?
Hi, Mayor.
I'm just going to go ahead and make the motion to nominate Glenn Kivell as mayor pro temp.
Further discussion? I've sat next...
Go ahead, Mary. Go ahead, Mary.
Got to be a second.
What's that? Second? I'll second that.
There has to be something.
Okay, I didn't think so. Is there a second nomination of Glenn for mayor pro temp?
Okay, so move on.
So there's no second, no discussion, or the motion, it's not seconded. So there's no motion on the floor. No discussion.
So the motion fails?
Yeah.
Is there anyone else that would like to nominate anyone for mayor pro temp, then?
Mr. Mayor, I'll nominate Maggie Kurtzweil for mayor pro temp.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Further discussion?
Further discussion?
So how does that work if there's somebody else who's interested? Would it be, if there's another motion, would we vote twice, or would we vote on the person if there's another motion? If there's somebody else who's interested?
Right, or does each, does each member get one vote, or would we be able to vote a clean slate?
Charter's not entirely clear. It says the council shall elect one of its members as mayor pro temp. I would think that the, I don't know that we have anything in the charter that specifically addresses the issue of whether a nominated council member participates in the vote, but if that, if you exclude that person, you have a six-member council, you're going to have six votes for the person that is nominated and to be elected by motion from the council. So you could have a three-three split, that would mean the motion fails. You're only going to take one motion at a time. Perhaps if there's a motion pending now with a second, discussion might reveal if there are more than one person interested in becoming the mayor pro temp, if they were to be elected.
Yeah, and that was my discussion, was, I have, my comment is that I've sat next to, first, Mayor Wallace, then Mayor Galis, and then Mr. Pelchat, Mayor Pelchat. So I would be willing to do it, but I don't want to be presumptuous, presumptuous, saying that, I put myself out there, I'd only be willing to do it if somebody nominated me.
Oh, okay, well, in that case, Mr. Mayor?
Fair.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Joe Rizzi as mayor pro temp.
I second it.
For discussion, is there any discussion?
Is there any discussion?
I'd like to make a comment. Just a historical note, this goes back a ways, but under the Potter administration years ago, we went without a mayor pro temp for over a year, I believe it was, before, and they squabbled about it, but never, they didn't, finally, they reached a decision and elected one. But I'm just throwing that out to let you know from a historical point of view, that happened, you know, fifteen years ago, twenty years ago.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I want to bring the council's attention back. There was a motion made and seconded to nominate council member Kurtzweil. I forget who made the motion.
I did.
That should be addressed, whether it's withdrawn, or you should take an up or down vote, and then come back to have council member Parisian make her motion again. So I don't remember who made the first motion, but that should be addressed in some fashion.
Thank you, Tim, I believe it was...
I did, but you seconded it, yeah.
But procedurally, if there's...
That could be withdrawn.
Majority, then...
It could be withdrawn, or you can have a vote on it.
So, let me just point of clarification, so if there is a majority vote, does that mean Ms. Kurtzweil will become the mayor pro temp?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, because I know in other boards, I'm not going to say which ones, but what they do is they allow one person to each vote for, have one vote. But that, I don't want to complicate things even more, but that may be a way of handling it, that's...
Okay, so let's get back to discussion on Ms. Kurtzweil being nominated for mayor pro temp.
Who's the maker of that motion?
I believe Ms. Walton was.
No, I did.
Carl, excuse me.
Carl, do you, Mr. Mayor, if I could address the council?
Yes.
Does council member Richards desire to move forward with that motion, given that's been seconded? Or does the seconder still believe in, are they still asserting the second in support of that motion?
I can't speak for Rose, Mrs. Walton, but I would stick with it, okay? I would say, go ahead with my initial motion. Is that, is that what you're looking for, Tim?
The motion you've made is seconded, it needs to be addressed in some fashion, whether by vote, which is where it is right now, it could be withdrawn, the second could be withdrawn, or it's going to be voted on.
Does the person nominated have to abstain, or do they allow them to vote for themselves?
I believe they should, but that's, I don't know that there's any rule, one way or the other.
Let's call the vote then.
Okay.
I'm not clear on this, okay? Explain that again, please.
Tim, you've made a motion to have council member Kurtzweil become the mayor pro temp.
Correct.
The motion's been seconded.
Right.
There's now discussion. There's been some discussion that council member Rizzi, if elected, would also be interested in becoming the mayor pro temp. That leaves, your motion has to be addressed before any, the council can do anything else. So you can get a vote on whether council member Kurtzweil becomes the mayor pro temp, or if you're not interested in that, you could withdraw your motion, or council member Walton could withdraw her second.
I...
I don't want to do that, I'm not going to withdraw. Rose, you want to withdraw?
I would suggest we have a roll call vote.
Okay, so...
Okay.
We're going to have a roll call vote on Ms. Kurtzweil being nominated for mayor pro temp. Glenn?
Lisa will do it.
Sorry.
Kivell?
No.
Parisian?
No.
Rizzi?
Yes.
Pelchat?
No.
Richards?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Kurtzweil?
Yes.
Well, council, I'm going to, I'm going to put this up to you. I don't have a rule in the charter or otherwise that indicates whether council member Kurtzweil can vote on her own participation and become elected as the mayor pro temp. With her vote, that motion passes, without, so I throw it to you guys, I don't know.
Well, let's let council decide. If council doesn't want, I know other individuals have voted in the past.
Historically, we've always let people, everybody vote, so...
Yeah.
I don't recall whether that's happened or not.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have, but if council would prefer that it not happen, then, then whatever council wants. If they don't want me to vote, I won't vote. Let council decide.
I have no objection.
Does anyone else?
Anything to go by, a precedent of any kind, never heard of it done before on this council.
Yeah, it was, sorry. If it's been done like this in the past, then we will continue to go like that.
Motion passed.
Motion passes.
Motion passes, okay.
Thank you, Tim. Consider approval by Kiwanis Club for the use of the Historic Village Depot grounds for their annual Christmas tree sale event. Mr. Wyper?
Good morning, or good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, congratulations, and good evening in council. I'm here on behalf of the Kiwanis Club. Every year, we come and ask the council to use the depot grounds for selling Christmas trees. It supports our many projects. Tonight, we stuffed six hundred dictionaries that we're going to pass up to all the third graders. We put on our annual senior dinner, which is the second Monday in December. And we, the city's been gracious enough to let us use the grounds ever since we lost the place down at Showerman's, when Bushes got built, and we didn't really have a place in town, and the city's been gracious enough, we have insurance, and we're trying to hold them harmless, so we're asking permission to use the grounds.
And it provides a great visual for the holidays.
We coordinate with the historical, and there's weddings there during the season, we coordinate with them, and the Cool Yule will be happening, and we shut down and let the parade, we just close the, close the sales down and let the parade come in, and we stay out of their way and keep the lights on, so. We work, we work with the town events to make sure we don't interfere, so, so we're asking for permission. Any questions?
Dan? I look forward to you guys being down there, quite honestly. It's always, it really ushers in the holiday season, and you guys are very mindful of taking care of everything, you get things cleared out, and you're done when it's done, so I don't see that as anything but pluses.
We do try to, weather permitting, we do try to clean up the grounds, and it turns, it looks like the grass always comes back better when, even though we've trampled on it all season, we rake it up, and depending, depending if there's snow or not, but...
Sure.
Make sure we're stewards of the property, too, so.
Well, I'll make the motion to approve use of the Historic Village Depot grounds for the annual Christmas tree sale held by the Kiwanis Club.
I'll second.
I have something to say.
Discussion, Carl?
I'd like to make note of it, that this year, we have a wonderful new electrical outlet, underground, okay? Directed right to their area to facilitate and help them out, also can be used by Kiwanis in their hot dog stuff, you know, machinery, and in the future depot days. And it's first-rate, and it's been done just two or three weeks ago, okay? And it's hopefully to benefit your whole efforts, which we appreciate greatly at Christmas time, Thanksgiving time, and summertime.
Thank you.
Okay, so we...
Motion is second, all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
There you go.
Thank you very much. We look forward to seeing you all there during the season, it'll be fun.
Thanks.
Hopefully, the weather will hold up nicely. A little bit of snow to make it look pretty. Thank you too much.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Phil.
Consider approval of permit for Cool Yule and associated road closures.
Kathy Swan apologizes for not being here this evening, she is home ill. But the annual Cool Yule is coming up on December second. Have the parade, go down to the Historic Village, see Santa Claus, everybody in town loves it, so I will let the chief address the street closures, but I think this is something that everybody in town enjoys.
Street closure request is the same as prior years. The parade will take approximately forty-five minutes from six to six forty-five. To be in the safe side, we're requesting the street closure resolution from six PM to seven PM.
Well, I'll make the motion that we approve the road closure for six to seven on December second, two thousand and sixteen, for the Cool Yule parade.
I support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Repression to the motion, I think it's two thousand and seventeen.
I'm sorry.
The date was two thousand and seventeen?
I said...
Oh, you said sixteen.
I'd like to add something.
Go ahead, Carl.
Mr. Collins, I, I hope that this year's event can be as well organized on the city side as it has been in the past. I know we've worked hard on the historical society side and have everything in place. I hope it can be, work as smoothly as it has the last few years, with the changes and the chairmans and such, okay?
I can assure you from working with Kathy Swan in the past, that she'll be on top of it. The police department, participation will be one hundred percent, just like it has been in prior years.
Thank you very much.
Item number four... Item number four, review cap letter.
Okay, this is the, I just lost it, corrective action plan letter that we have to submit to the state because the city used funds out of our general fund fund balance last year. We did this last year. The city is not using significant amounts of fund balance. We still have well over $2 million in fund balance, but because we are using some of fund balance in the past, the corrective action, as it was last year, although the letter came out before this, or after this budget had already been approved, is to begin easing off of and stopping using fund balance. And that is our anticipation with the upcoming budget is to make sure that it is a total balanced budget with revenues and expenditures, hopefully revenues possibly even exceeding expenditures.
I have a comment, if I may.
Go ahead, Joe.
I just want to stress that this is why it's so important that we continue talking about this budget, is because basically what this is saying is that we're spending more money than we're taking in, which is an alarming trend. So I know we have a budget discussion item. I was going to kind of save these comments for the budget, but I would say that we need to start maybe having some work sessions or whatever it takes, especially since we have a new council, to start getting our hands on this budget. Because I do not want to have to wait until next year, let's call it May, or right before the, the next year's budget is due. We should be having these discussions now to develop an action more than just a letter to the state of Michigan. Thank you.
I think it's important, though, that we, we don't actually engage ourselves into the, the working machine of every aspect of the city. We're supposed to be at the 10,000-foot level, deciding what policy is and the direction, and letting the, the department heads and the city manager manage how things get there. So we've, we've had some trouble over the last couple of years. This, this whole, the necessity of the cap thing is a little bit overblown in that, that, you know, we do have that fire truck in here that really kind of shifts things substantially more severe from the 16 budget. But nonetheless, we've had three years in a row where we, we have exceeded what our revenues were. So we do need to end up taking this quite seriously. It's just not, it shouldn't be this alarming thing. It just needs to be attended to.
Maggie?
Thank you. This is pretty serious, that this is the second time the city has received a corrective action letter from the state of Michigan. I think we're the only community in the area that has received these letters. So I think that the, you know, the antennas are up, and this is very, very serious and very alarming that this is occurring. I think moving forward, we need to spend some time working on the budget. And I'd just like to remind some of the new council members that are here tonight that the statutory authority for spending and taxing is with council, not with the city manager. So this is a direct responsibility of council to get into the nitty gritty of this budget. That's what the statute says. And I think what we need to do is comply with the statute and make sure that we are discharging our duties as elected officials. I know there's a gentleman in the audience that may disagree with me. I can, I can make a copy of that statute and provide it to you for review. But it's clearly, she does not have authority to tax or to spend. So I'm going to stay on top of this and micromanage it a little bit in areas where I think we have been deficient. That's one of the reasons why I ran for council was because of the budget. But I think that, you know, we're going to get there. We're eventually going to get there.
I got something to say.
Go ahead, Carl.
I agree with Glenn in part, and I agree with Maggie in part. But I have my own slant on budgetary things, okay? I feel that the, the role of, proper role of council is to set a goal or parameters, okay, on the left of the right or a level. This is, as in other words, a target for us to shoot at, okay, to keep our spending within a certain level. And micromanaging the, the small details, and I can talk about that a lot because I've got a lot of them, but it's not for council level, it's for workshop level. And then feed it to the, the city man, the administration, not, not discuss it in council, like what Glenn was getting at. We, no point in us trying to micromanage every dumps, any, every dump truck, you know, weed chopper, snow blower. That's, that's a waste of our time. Set goals that we can reasonably attain and hold the line on, and let them handle the administrative part. And I'll be glad to give them some suggestions on how to save money. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Carl. So are we moving forward?
That was just a discussion piece.
Okay. Discussion current, excuse me, condition, current needs and future plans for rental houses located on East McCady Park property.
It has been brought to my attention that the one rental house that we have in McCady Park that is habited is approaching near inhabitable. The roof has a leak, and we have temporarily put a tarp over it because the quotes that we got to fix it were over $5,000. There is electrical issues inside the garage and inside the house that need fixed, along with a couple of other relatively minor issues. But all in all, for what we bring in in rent and pay in taxes, because we are making money on that property, I think it is time for the council to begin discussions on whether we want to continue to be a landlord, whether we want to maintain rental property on McCady Park property, or whether it is time to begin the process of notifying the tenant that we will be terminating the lease and moving forward with vacating the property and preparing for demolition.
John?
That's okay.
I apologize for that habit. My question is, Lynn, how much profit are we bringing? I know we charge, what is it, $1,100, $1,200 after taxes? Our profit is what?
I believe we pay just over $2,000 in property taxes, but then you've got all the maintenance that we do, such as the roof, the electrical, things like that, like any landlord would. I believe the monthly rent is $850 on the home, so it's not a substantial amount. Again, it's offset a lot by the maintenance costs and the property taxes that we pay.
Yep, and that's, I kind of knew that. And that's where my next quiet statement is, is that we're not making much money on this at all. So...
No, I mean, being a landlord's not a core competency of government.
Yeah, if, if you have alternate plans, I'd be willing to entertain whatever it is. I don't think we need to spend too much time on this.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with us evacuating this property, but it, it hasn't had a ton of maintenance stuff that was costly. A roof changes the dynamic there. When it was just messing around with, changing out an outlet, or, you know, a light fixture or something, that was one thing. But I mean, the roof is a different, different thing. And even with that, if you look at the, what the rent is compared to what the, the taxes on an annual basis, it still isn't prohibitive to keep it alive. It's just that if we're going to do that, if we're going to show the guy the door, let's make sure that we end up getting it torn down quickly, so we're not paying taxes on a building that is just sitting there idle. So...
I agree with that.
So you need to end up looking at what those costs for raising the buildings are, too.
Okay.
I got something to say, will you?
Go ahead, Carl.
I've been in that house many times. A lot of it, we were partying. This is going back 15 to 20 years. I can tell you this, that house is very well made and very resistant to damage. When that house was first acquired by the city, the DPW workers lived in it, okay? The ones that didn't have a place to live, as I understand it. I wasn't involved with the city back then. But the city put it to good use. And the other little house that's with it that's below code, as far as square footage, I think it only amounts to 600 square feet at the most for living space, is a cozy little place for a handicapped person right next to the park. And I know it isn't a good fit for the city, bureaucratically, infrastructure-wise, to maintain rental housing. And we've torn down several houses in the past that we owned, okay? The houses were, you know, uptown, on the block behind the bar up there, the Newton House and the Grady House. And on that same property with the, with the house existing as it is now, we tore down the, the boy's house, I believe, when, not too long after we bought it. As a city, we couldn't sustain taking care of it because after an inspection, it had black mold in it. Private enterprise, private property, that might have been rehabbed. But as we, with us owning it, had, we had to tear it down, okay? Because we couldn't, we couldn't do that and really let somebody really live in the place. And that's kind of a shame, but it's a major victory that the place never got turned into a strip mall, thinking back, people. Because that's what they initially, we went to court over the matter. Initially, the Nettles wanted to sell the whole place to a bank and let the bank build a strip mall in there, which they probably makes them...
Point of order. Carl, let's take on, stay on the subject we're on.
Okay. Glenn, please, if I'm, if I'm wrong on anything, correct me.
No, it isn't that. You're drifting into stories that have nothing to do with the houses on McCady Park.
All right. I, personally, I think it's worth looking into to preserve it and raise the rent. That guy's been a good tenant in that house for the last, oh, I don't know, 10, 12 years. And I thought it was $950 over a month, not $850, but I don't know about the rest of the dynamics of taxing. I don't, I don't know about that. I'm just throwing my two cents out there. I've been in the house many times.
Any further discussion? All right, so moving on to, I'm sorry, you're going to...
Tuba Christmas.
Tuba Christmas, please, number six.
You even need a memorial proclamation?
Okay.
Maybe, yes, maybe you'd ask for some background.
Thank you. Lynn, could I please get some background information on this?
Sure. The Salem South Lion District Library has done the tuba Christmas for the past several years. It is a concert of all tuba players or melaphone players, for those of you that play band and know the difference. They, it's a free concert. It was started decades ago by a composer, and it is a great outdoor Christmas concert that people really enjoy.
It is entertaining.
All right, mayoral proclamation. Whereas a tuba Christmas, concerts as conceived in 1974 by renowned tubist Harvey G. Williams have become an annual holiday tradition in cities throughout the world. And tuba Christmas brings together tuba euphorium players of all ages to present public concerts of traditional Christmas carols, acknowledging their proud musical heritage. And whereas tuba Christmas honors all great tuba and euphorium players through the legendary artist, teacher William J. Bell, born Christmas Day of 1902, and pays tribute to all composers who have given solo and ensemble, ensemble literature to the, to these grand and deserving instruments through American composer Alec Wilder, who contributed his arrangements of Christmas carols to tuba Christmas and who died on Christmas Eve in 1980. And whereas tuba Christmas concerts are presented free for the enjoyment of the public audience, and whereas tuba Christmas coordinator Dale Marzuski for the city of South Lion has brought this unique holiday event conducted by Dale Marzuski to our fair city. Now, therefore, I, Dan Pelchat, mayor of the city of South Lion, Michigan, do hereby proclaim December 4th, 2017, as tuba Christmas Day. Throughout the city of South Lion, furthermore, I bid all of our citizens to attend and enjoy this annual tuba Christmas concert being presented at the Salem South Lion District Library, December 4th, 2017, at 7:00 PM. All right. All right. Thank you for everyone's assistance on that.
What do we do?
Thank you. All right. It's Christmas Day, everybody. I'm looking forward to that. Okay. We'll move on to the budget. Maggie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had just one issue for tonight, and just wanted to know what council's feeling was on it. I kind of thought, since this is, I'm going on my third year now working on the budget with issues. One of the things that I noticed when I was doing my research with other cities is that they had a resolution with their budget that sort of established the policy for council as to how far they would dip with respect to their general fund balance. And I did look through the minutes here in the city, and I really did not find a resolution where council sort of set some sort of fiscal standard or minimal standard with respect to the general fund. So I was wondering if council would be interested in doing that. And I think maybe if we had had something like that in place, what it does is it puts major expenditures that you're going to make in check, because I think you have this resolution that says that you want to continue to build the general fund. And so when you come up with an amendment to tap into the general fund, you have this resolution that is saying, you know what, you better think twice about this particular purchase, you better think about this particular expenditure, because we have a policy in place that says we want to establish a minimal level for our general fund. Even though we may be moving into some good economic times, we've had two quarters now where GDP's been 3%. That does not mean that that is good, that is at all sustainable over the long run. So you're going to have these, you know, these troughs and these dips in the economy. And so I think you need to start preparing for it. 2.6, wherever it's at today, I think is a little low. I'd just like to hear if council wants to begin establishing some policies, that we can start working with the broad nature of the budget. It's for discussion.
A couple of weeks ago, I had asked about the uncapped taxable value that, that we've enjoyed over the last couple, well, since 16, actually. And Ann Grady from the Chief of Equalization had passed along to me that it's actually been $7.8 million in taxable value change since 16, that doesn't include colonial acres. I wanted to ask her about what triggers them getting notice on that as well, but she hasn't gotten back with me quite yet. The, one of the problems that's going to start playing in our backyard is that we're going to be hit by headly. We're not going to end up being able to enjoy all the benefits of seeing some escalated value in our community because we're exceeding the propa either rate of inflation or 5%. So we're going to end up having this governor on our own economy limiting what we're going to be able to generate in tax revenue. So unless we can get a headly override, which is a, an electorate kind of a thing, we're going to have to go to the public and try to get them to give us the ability to be able to charge a rate that's in the charter. So, so the idea of trying to encumber ourselves...
Coming back to, to what Maggie was saying about the, um, putting some sort of resolution in place for checks and balances for spending, uh, I'm always in favor of watching what we're spending. So if there's, looking for a consensus from council, I mean, right now you have two. Maggie, I would encourage you to, if you want to speak to Tim, if council agrees and allows, maybe speak to Tim and start working on something if we give that direction. If council certainly doesn't want that direction, that's appropriate as well. Um, but my personal opinion is that any sort of, uh, checks and balances that we can put in place to, uh, stop ourselves from overspending more money than we're taking in would be beneficial for the city and the taxpayers. My next comment is in regards to, um, just the budget going forward. And I was curious, Lynn, if you had a date, tentative date, ballpark, when we could start reviewing the budget? Because before you know it, the holidays are going to be here and-
Lori and I are finalizing the spreadsheet with the audited figures from last year. Um, we will then pass that spreadsheet on to the department heads to input their tentative budget. I was looking to meet with department heads in early December at the latest, um, so that we can start looking at where we may or may not have funds to spend. And then I would say early January with the council.
Okay. Because the, yes, ultimately, any decision that we make is, is, has to be authorized by council and all the spending has to be approved by council. So it has to be council who takes, it's, it's city management or ownership and also council gives the direction. So my suggestion would be to be, I'm going to state the obvious here, but look at what you know. So for example, what employee costs are, what we had from overtime from last year, where you kind of see it going forward, what you, what the healthcare and the benefits are and plug those into the budget so we really know what we have to play with here and what our baseline is. And I'm sure you'll do that. So it's a very high level, but I think it's good that we're going to have those discussions and I'd like to see them, uh, continue in, in January. And like I said earlier, if we have to have a special meeting, maybe that would be beneficial, especially for the new members on council.
Maggie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, uh, the general fund policy, uh, for me, when I started researching it, came up when, uh, the general fund appeared to really be declining and dipping. And, and, and at some point, the, the question is for council, how far do you allow that general fund to go? Are you going to be okay with a million dollars in the general fund? Are you going to be okay with 1.5? At what point does council say, we're not going to allow this general fund to get any lower than this number? And I think that is more of the policy issue because I think what it does is it sets in a little bit of fiscal discipline, uh, to begin looking at it. And I think it begins preparing for those times when the economy is, is not going to do well. Um, you've got to remember, this general fund four or five years ago was $5 million. So the city has gone through, uh, $2 million, 2.2 million dollars in a very, very short period of time. And, and I just think that maybe we should start on that fiscal track and just take a look. And it's not a firm number. It's, it's a number to say, we sh, we shall not dip below or we shall make an effort to achieve. Um, and if you have to dip in, you have to dip in, but at least get something there where there is some agreement among council that we can start working with this general fund and stop the bleeding. Because the trend is bad, so. But it is what it is. You just move forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, like I said, I'm in, I'm in favor of putting some checks and balances in, but it, it sounds like there's no other really discussion from other people.
I got something to say.
Go ahead, Carl.
Okay, Mike, I'm going to direct this at Lynn because she's our chief actuator, okay? Uh, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, but Platt and Moran has gone as far with us as they're going to go or obligated to go in, in filling us in and giving us what our status is on the budget. Okay?
Platt and Moran does not have anything to do with the budget. If they assisted us in any way with the budget, they could not be our auditors.
Okay. So the burden to create models of budgetary planning, futuristic planning, like five years, nine years down the road, relies on us or an outside agency if we want to use it? We've got all this technology, okay, uh, in, in our own building here. I don't know, is it possible, in your opinion, I mean, you know, that we can, we can look at other models, either created by other communities or create one for ourselves on our own and choose it?
Models in terms of how many years out we budget, models in terms of whether we do priority-based budgeting, using specific goals of the council to prioritize how we budget, um, models in terms of a different way of laying out our budget for the public and for ease of reading. What type of model are you wanting?
Okay, that's for you to recommend to us because I'm not a-
Well, those are all three very separate things.
All right. Uh, I'm hoping that, uh, someone can make it clear to us in the long run, a simple layman that we are pretty much, okay? The nature of our problem, where we stand now, where we want to be in three years, five years, maybe nine years, okay? All right?
Are you talking about where we want to be in three years, five years, nine years in terms of-
Correcting our-
-fund balance percentage, in terms of expenditures versus revenues, in terms of identifying new revenue sources?
No. Okay. It's in terms of correcting and maintaining, uh, a favorable balance with MERS, okay? Uh, our general bond issues?
Our general bond issues are in good shape. Um, in terms of MERS, we're on the same 22-year, I think it is, pay down that most municipalities when the, within the state are. We will hopefully pay it off sooner than that because with an increase in employee contributions, we're not reducing city contributions, um, in terms of actual dollar value. So we were, we're paying it down faster than anticipated. Um, our general fund balance is actually 47% of our annual budget, which puts us in approximately the top 10% of municipalities in the country in terms of savings. But if the council would like to increase the amount of fund balance we have in the general fund, I am all for that, but give me a flat amount, give me a percentage and we will target and get there.
Well, I think we should all work this out in a workshop. What do you think, Mr. Mayor? It's up to you.
Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah. I, I was going to say that I think a lot of these questions will be answered once Lynn has that budget early on in January. I mean, that's, we have to have administration do their job so we can react accordingly. And what I mean by that is, once we have those numbers and that baseline I was talking about, then we know what we have to play with. If we know that, look, we're taking in, we're already on track to spend more than we're taking in, then we're going to have to make adjustments and we're going to have to say, this is where we have to make adjustments. So I think it's important to get those numbers really early on so we can make those decisions. Council may make the decision, I'm just hypothetically speaking, where we say, okay, that 22 years, I'm not satisfied, or not me, or council is not satisfied with taking 22 years, we may want to spend, pay it down earlier. Or the fund balance that we have, we're on track just to break even. And that's not a healthy track. Or we're on track to spend more than we're taking in. So I think once we, and I, Carl, I do agree with you, once we do get, um, a work session would be helpful, but I think we need to give the time to our, our people who run the city in order to get the numbers for us so we can digest it, if that's fair.
Go ahead.
My primary interest is getting in the black and staying in the black. So that should be the first goal that, that we try to achieve. The rest of the stuff is, um, once you do that, that's sort of like baby steps. That gets the ball rolling and then you start making your, your kind of nuanced adjustments from that point.
So are you talking, when you say in the black?
That we haven't, yeah.
This year's revenue doesn't exceed this year's revenue?
That's correct.
Okay. Because we are technically in the black. We have never gone into a deficit.
I understand that. You know what I'm talking about. Expenditures don't exceed revenues.
Okay. Um, is the council willing to consider alternative revenue sources?
Such as?
A lottery?
Such as? No, not as a lottery. Um, it's been a controversial issue in South Lyon in the past. However, the state does allow for cities that pass ordinances allowing marijuana provisioning, growing, um, dispensary facilities such as that, to have a registration fee of up to $5,000 apiece. It's an alternative revenue source, um, that is not taxed.
I'd rather somebody else carry that load personally, but-
Yeah, 5,000, I don't think is going to save our city.
Well, um, just as a, throw it out there, if we allowed transportation and grow facilities and provisioning facilities, which would all, under our current zoning, have to be in an I-1 or an I-2, we have a very large industrial park that's sitting there empty, that could potentially fill up very quickly with these types of facilities at $5,000 a year per facility. That's a lot of money.
I am not opposed to any ideas that come from either you or council. If someone comes to the table and says, hey, it's medical marijuana, or hey, it's checks and balances, let's bring it to the table and at least discuss ideas, whether it's merging services, whatever it might be. I think it's, everything needs to be brought out into the open. We need to discover and discuss all ideas, whether we take them on and go with it or not. Um, at least we can see what our options are. So I'm never opposed to entertaining any idea.
Okay. Maggie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, I, I, you know, I, I think I, I spoke about that in the spring, is that the, um, revenues for the city are, are pretty much, uh, flatlined. And I think it's not only in the City of South Lyon, but I think you have to look in East Lansing, in the City of Ann Arbor. Um, the city is built out. So your, your tax revenue from your property taxes is, is flatlined. So if, if the city is going to look for additional monies, uh, you have to find that second source of revenue. Uh, whether that comes from grants, whether that comes from medical marijuana, whether it comes from whatever, um, the, the city has to seriously explore a second ring of revenue because property taxes are not going to, um, be able to give the city the things that they want, which is the developed volunteer park, um, and expanded McCatty Park. Uh, these things cost money and you have to understand that you have rising costs in pensions and labor. Um, I just saw some, uh, recent reports as to the increase in labor that is beginning to happen with the, uh, 3% GDP that we're experiencing. And, uh, so there's going to be inflation, uh, coming down the road, uh, probably within the next seven months, seven to eight months. So, um, you need that second source of revenue or you need to look for options to curbing your legacy costs. I mean, they're tough decisions and they're not easy. Uh, but those are going to be the challenges as we move forward. This I-1 and I-2, is this property by any chance over in Dixboro?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to our manager's report. Lynn?
All right. Let me scroll up. Okay, Tim and I have been working with MERS to bring a resolution and plan for the defined contribute, but defined contribution benefit plan to the council. Um, we've discovered there are more blanks to fill in than we had anticipated. So the plan is to have a representative from MERS here at the next meeting to discuss filling in those blanks and hopefully adopting and finalizing the new, uh, new higher benefit plan. Um, for those of you that are on council, volunteer board members, commission members, consultants, employees, the annual employee, or the annual appreciation event is scheduled for Wednesday, December 6th at, drumroll, the South Lyon Hotel. Um, so watch for your invitations in the mail. The city hall and nonessential departments will be closed Thursday, the 23rd and Friday, the 24th for the Thanksgiving holiday. Each member of the council will be receiving a, um, copy of a newly developed council reference packet. Um, this has basic information for everyone regarding the City of South Lyon, information on partner organizations like the MML. It has, um, FOIA information, open meetings information, and a lot of other things, including parliamentary procedures. So hopefully it will be of use to each of you. For those of you that are newly elected to the council, you have a flyer in front of you for the upcoming Michigan Municipal League Training for Newly Elected Officials. Uh, the city will pay for your attendance if you are interested. So if you would like to attend, please complete the flyer and return it to me, um, by the next meeting so that we can submit your registration. And also for each of the new council members, you'll be getting a city email address for use for city business. I'll be contacting you this week to arrange for you to connect with our IT services contractor to provide them with what you would like to use for a password. Um, that way only you and our contracting company know the password. They'll also walk you through setting up the account on your computer and any mobile devices that you would like. Beyond that, I hope everybody has a happy Thanksgiving and, um, hopefully we only have a little bit of snow to help the Kiwanis out, but not too much because we'd like to have a nice, uh, warm winter, at least I would. Thank you very much.
Can I have a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
Lynn, for, when I was at, uh, driving by the Knowles of South Lyon, did, I didn't notice, did they replace those curbs to make them ADA compliant?
They have not yet. It is something that Don Gotham is working with them on. He has, I believe, done two warnings, um, getting ready to accelerate the enforcement issue.
What does that mean? Accelerate?
Well, if they are not willing to comply or give a date for complying, then they would be issued a ticket and would go to court.
Okay. Well, please, if you could stay on that because I think we've asked about that a couple months ago.
Yep.
It's just, I have memories of Knowles of South Lyon that our residents went through that wasn't the best situation. Everything's working out, getting smoothed out, but I'd like to see that closed up, that loose end. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then also, while they're over there, maybe you can bring to attention that the drains are also filled, uh, with leaves and I don't think they're draining very well. So-
Okay.
I don't know if that's property owners or our responsibility since it's on-
They have not turned anything over to the city yet, so it is still either the homeowners or the developers' responsibility.
So two items. Thank you. That's all I had. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have, well, Lynn, I guess I should say, um, I have a couple of things. My first one is, can we start getting the weekly reports again?
Yes, you can.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, do you happen to know the status of the water tower? Is it getting painted? What's-
It is scheduled to get painted next spring. Um, the bid documents did not arrive from Dixon, who is the contractor that, um, pretty much everybody has due their water tower bid documents until after the painting season. So we are finalizing those, updating them with dates for the spring and hopefully we'll do it first thing in the spring. One of the challenges we're trying to decide on is if we bid it out this winter and say it has to be done in the spring, we may get fewer contractors that bid on it or at a higher price than if we were to bid it with the contractor having the option of bidding it in the spring or the fall. It is something we can't do during the summer. There's only a couple of months out of the year that we can do it because we have to take the tank out of service so that we can do the interior and exterior.
Along those same lines, um, what's the status of finding someone to take over for the water department, sewer department, DPW?
With the progress with MERS, I hope to begin advertising for that position this week.
I guess my question is, why aren't we doing that sooner? Why can't we put the application out there ahead of time?
Because we did not want to risk advertising for and finding an employer- year that we can do it, because we have to take the tank out of service so that we can do the interior and exterior.
Along those same lines, what's the status of finding someone to take over for the water department, sewer department, DPW?
With the progress with MERS, I hope to begin advertising for that position this week.
I guess my question is, why aren't we doing that sooner? Why can't we put the application out there ahead of time?
Because we did not want to risk advertising for and finding an employee that we were very interested in, yet we're not able to make an offer to, because we were not in a position from the retirement perspective to do so.
I'm going to be completely frank. I feel as though I feel more comfortable having somebody from DPW or somebody from Water as a liaison, just because we used to have Bob here at hand, so if we ever had a question that popped up, we could turn to him and he could give us the complete rundown, the complete history, and it was very comforting to know that. And not having him here is, it's difficult, because there's nobody in this room that can really speak to what DPW or Water does, no one that's qualified that can actually speak to it. We can relay information back and forth, but I would hope that we could at least present the agenda to DPW, to Water, and say, hey, if there's something on the agenda pertinent to your department, please show up and speak to it, be our liaison for us, because we have very talented DPW workers and very talented Water and wastewater workers as well. And I would appreciate it on my end, I can't speak for council, I'm only one of seven, but I would love a liaison to show up, and they don't have to come to every meeting, but if there's something on the agenda, we should send it to them every other week and say, if this is pertinent to your department, please feel free to speak to it, we'd love to hear from you, because I have no idea what's happening on that side of the world.
And I don't have a problem doing that, as long as the council is aware, it will be overtime hours.
It's always overtime hours. Water doesn't, like, we always constantly have Water, so.
When Bob was here, Bob was salary, it was not overtime hours. And I have heard from this council several times in the past few months, concerns about the overtime in the water, wastewater, and DPW departments. So having a liaison here, I don't have a problem with, as long as the council is not going to question the overtime.
I feel as though when we question overtime, for DPW and for wastewater, they are working overtime all of the time, so it's justified that their hours might be more. So, to me, that's not a concern. My concern is getting proper information from people who are qualified to provide the information to us. So if they are licensed and know what they're talking about, and they can speak to an issue on the agenda, like I said, they don't have to come to every meeting, but if we at least include them and provide them with the agenda, and it's pertinent to them and their department, I think they should be able to come and speak at our meetings and have a say in what's going on with our city. And furthermore, I know that we're utilizing HRC quite a bit. Do we necessarily need to be utilizing HRC as much as we are if we have such qualified DPW and Water workers?
Yes, HRC is an engineering firm with engineering background and substantial history with the city. Our DPW and Water, wastewater workers, while well-qualified as individual workers on distribution systems and street maintenance and park maintenance, they do not have the engineering background to do the work that we're asking HRC to do. And it is no different than the work where you would have asked HRC to do if Bob Martin were still with the city.
I disagree with that, and I think the only people who could speak to that would be the DPW workers or the Water workers who could say, yes, it's something we could handle, or yes, or no, that's not something that's within our realm. So again, like, this is something that only licensed professionals in that field could speak to. That, again, I'm one of seven, but I would just feel more comfortable with a liaison.
I don't think that everything is equal, but there are certainly events that take place that it would be nice for us to have a firsthand view of, so, you know, it seems as though those guys would know what those important events would be, so. I mean, I don't want to end up having them, I don't want to pay overtime for the run-of-the-mill stuff, but when certain peculiar circumstances present themselves, it'd be nice to get information instead of hearing it through the grapevine on the street, so.
Dan?
Yes, go ahead, Joe.
Lynn, I assume you speak to your supervisors at the DPW and the wastewater treatment facility?
Yes, I speak to both foremen on a regular basis.
Okay, so if you're able to get the necessary information, I assume that they're going to give you an accurate report or the right information, I wouldn't think that they would need to attend a meeting, I'm sure they don't want to, they have better things to do on a Monday evening with their family than attend a meeting, but of course, if we have a break or an emergency purchase, yes, I think it would be nice to have a foreman here, but not something we have to stress, because you're talking to them anyways. Thank you.
I'll say something if you want.
Can I go?
I want to agree with Mary, I agree with Mary completely. I agree with what Joe's saying, and I agree with what Glenn's been saying also. I'd like, I know the guys, and I'm not going to name names, I've talked with them. We need, we should have somebody here from time to time, and I trust you, and I trust them, but personally, I do not trust HRC, under any circumstances, completely, blindly. Certainly, we need them, we got to have them for some things, there's no doubt about it, but they'll give you a song and dance, okay? They're saving the day for you on everything, and that's not true. I've made my statement. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Carl. All right, we'll move on to council comments, and we'll start with you, Carl.
I'd rather start with somebody else.
Okay, that's fine. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to start off by apologizing, old habits, I think I called you John once, and it's two years of sitting here, you understand, I apologize for that. First, I wanted to start off by thanking the election workers, and not just the election workers, but everybody who put in so much time into this past election, particularly the election worker spending here, and Lisa, I know you and Judy, and we're here, I think Judy said 5:30 or sooner, and it takes weeks and months to prepare, and those workers were here all day, and I want to commend them, and all, throughout the evening as well, so I want to commend them and thank them for their hard work. Speaking of the election, also wanted to congratulate the newly elected members of this council and the mayor. I think everybody brings great strengths. Carl, you have a lot of strengths, knowledge of the city, a lot of historical information. Glenn, you've been here for a long time, and I think you have that kind of foundation. Rose, as a lifelong resident and involved in the community, I think you have a lot of connections and a lot of insight and care passionately about this, about this city, that you're going to do a lot of good. And Dan, you know, I think you're going to do, going to do great, I mean, it's, running against seven people, that's tough, or was it nine, or I lost count?
Well, I think at the end, it was seven total, so.
So to be the number-one vote getter, and that shows a commitment, and I know Dan was working hard, and I always believe those who campaign the hardest are going to work the hardest for the residents, because if you're willing to put that effort in before the election, then you're going to, you're going to do great. So also wanted to thank those who ran for mayor as well. I know Mr. Powell, and there were some other members, Ashley Enstead, and I do hope that whatever happens two years from now, that they pursue a position on city council, run for office or sometime, because I think both members would be a great addition to this board. So Dan, with that, I just do want to say congratulations again, and it's, it's an honor to sit next to my third mayor, so, thank you. Next, I did mention this a couple of months ago regarding the zoning board of appeals. I currently sit on the zoning board of appeals, I was appointed, oh geez, seven years ago by former mayor, Mayor John Doyle, and it's something that we meet once a month, and the ZBA has a council liaison. With my family situation, we have wrestling and dance, and outside of Mondays, Thursdays is literally my worst day. So for family reasons, I will be submitting my resignation, just to free up my Thursday nights, but I did want to mention it here tonight, because we have to have a liaison to the ZBA. I was going to recommend Carl, but I didn't want to be, I wanted to see if that was something you'd be interested in, Carl, before I submit my resignation and kind of move forward with.
This is a zoning board of appeals?
Yes, unless there's somebody else who has a tremendous desire, I thought you may have.
You didn't say DVA, did you?
No, I said ZBA.
ZBA, zoning board of appeals, yeah, I'd be, I'd be glad to work on that.
Okay, if there's somebody else to be interested, I'd entertain that as well, but I thought you may be a good.
Yeah, I'd be interested.
Okay, then that will be coming, my resignation, and it's strictly family reasons and my involvement with my family, so. Next, and lastly, I just wanted to comment on this, the MERS situation going forward. I do think it's very good that we are making progress towards fixing our pension obligations and the unfunded liabilities. I will say, though, I have heard from a lot of employees and a lot of residents, and I've kind of rethought my position, and I think that we need to have a fair position for these employees. What I mean by that is, I'm not going to get down to specifics, but I do think we need to offer a little more than what the private sector gives for matching for, if we're going to move towards a 401(k) style. I do think it has to be more in line with the public sector. Again, we'll get more into the specifics, but what I want to stress is that as elected officials, we need to watch out for our employees, and we need to watch out for our residents. And once we move towards that 401(k) style, my fear is that if we're not generous enough, that we will not be getting the good employees in order to take care of our residents and give them the service they deserve. So going forward, I do think we will have a healthy discussion, it will be fair, and I am confident that it'll be something that the current employees will feel comfortable with, and that it'll be fair for everybody going forward. So with that, I'd like to say thank you for listening to me tonight, congratulations again to everybody. Thank you, everybody, for showing up to vote, and good night, thank you.
Mary?
Okay. I have just a couple of things. The liquor license meeting was held last week, and I would say that we had tremendous progress. We had a variety of different business owners in South Lyon come to the meeting, express concerns about the ordinance that is currently written, and we were able to hear those concerns and move forward. So that was thank you to all the business owners that took the time out of their day to sit with us and just let us hear what was going on. I also wanted to say congratulations to everyone who ran, either for council or whether it was for the mayoral seat, and congratulations to the winners, but also, it takes a certain something to run, it's not easy to run and go campaigning and buy signs and go door-to-door, and it takes a lot, so understanding, I respect everyone who ran for office, so good for you, and good job. Also, let's see, I wanted to give a special shout-out to Big B Coffee. Big B Coffee does these fundraisers quite often where they have a celebrity guest, local celebrity guest, come in and just kind of act as a barista, and I wanted to just say that that was such a clean facility, everyone there was very professional, very kind, and it was just a pleasure to go and meet new people that were in Big B and just the local residents in general. So, well done to the owners of Big B and the workers that are there, who all happen to be high school or college students, so good for you for hustling. Let's see. I wanted to encourage the current council and mayor to, if you get the time, go visit the police department, go do a tour of the fire department, meet with DPW, meet with wastewater Water, and kind of get to know the people that work for your city. Go to city hall, meet the people who work there, because we have incredible talent here in South Lyon, we have very hard workers, and they are greatly appreciated, but it's just a little extra something that you can do to understand how things work. Attend cultural arts commission meetings and attend planning commission meetings, even if it's not all the time, but just every once in a while, just to get a feel for who the faces are. So when you hear the names, you know who you're dealing with, you know who you're working with, you've seen them in action, and you can say you've seen the state of the facility and what it looks like, and who the workers are that actually pick up the leaves. So the boots-on-the-ground people are very important, and it's important to get to know everyone in the city. Sitting up here and just being one-sided is only going to get you so far, because you can make decisions blindly, but if you know the other side of where your employees are coming from, it's a little harder to make decisions. So I would encourage everyone, even if you're not new to council, go out and see your employees and see how they're doing. Ladies Night Out, November 17th, would highly encourage you, like Bob had said earlier, he talked it up, it's going to be an excellent event. The quilt show, November 15th, from 6 to 8, just outside these doors, and I think that's it, congratulations again, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Carl?
Okay, I'll try to move as fast and as smoothly as possible. I want to thank everybody firstly, and I'm going to make some thanks at the end, too. My helpers and staff that helped me come through this election period of time, especially when I've been in recovery. It's a little more than 90 days right now since I had a serious injury, and a little less than 90 days since I had major surgery, and, because I didn't go in at first, I didn't think I was hurt that bad. Anyway, recovery has been impossible without help from certain people, Mr. Ryan Laird has been a great help to me, and my neighbors also, and friends of mine that I've made over the last few years since I've lived across the street, more or less. Anyway, and I urge the dedicated people that ran in the last election, okay, to dedicate themselves to serving the city in some capacity in the future, on a committee, a commission, other committees, work committees or something in some way, and continue their interest in the city, okay, because I certainly have over the last six, seven, eight years, before I was elected to this position. All right, I want to move on to a few quick things here, Mr. Mayor. The South Lyon Woods Trailer Park, I, as you know from past discussions and comments, I've often kept up with them, they gave me the, their management wouldn't allow them to print it up for the city, but I could, they wrote it down for me, and I can verbally address it to the council, okay? As of this year, and over the last three years, we have brought in 50 new homes, and for the rest of this year, there's two onboard and eight more that are ordered that will probably come next year for, in 2018. That's a lot of homes, 50 new homes in the past three years since '15. They worked primarily with Tom Lyon, the inspector we had, started the ball rolling. With his initiative, we got through to the top people. We're going to be completing more roadwork in the community, and I hope they fix the parking lot by the car wash, or I mean, the laundromat, that's all their, all their property. They're going to upgrade the basketball hoops and the backboard, and they're removing four more homes that are demolishing before the end of this year, okay? They've probably demolished, oh, you know about the fire, they've probably demolished five or six already this year. And they're looking into replacing the fence that borders the Hungry Howie's property. They do not own the Hungry Howie, excuse me, the Hungry Howie's property, they do own the other property on the other side, but not the Hungry Howie's side. And I've been urging them to repair the sidewalk, and she said she's going to put it on the front burner to try to get it done with matching funds. That sidewalk is treacherous and dangerous, it's never been repaired or upgraded or replaced, and it's state law, you got to put in the pads and everything at the edges. Anyway, moving on to the next one here. In the future, I hate to, okay, in the package I got Saturday, people, Lisa, I have difficulty reading it, okay? Now, maybe not everybody, but I would prefer larger print, a little bit larger. For myself, I ran through the first seven pages, my eyes gave out, that's just me, okay? If it's too much trouble, don't worry about it, we'll overlook it, I guess, but I'm just mentioning it to you. I have something I have to deal with, I guess. Okay. I've been looking at Patty Wax, okay? You all know the Patty Wax location's been vacated. The same business is in town where Sharon's Flooring was, on Lake La Pieta Street, and he calls his business Archive Games, and it's Mr. Brian Walker, 116 North La Pieta. And he has over 7,000 videos and DVDs or whatever he markets in that building, and he's looking forward to having a good run there. Sharon moved to Canton, for those of you that don't know, she moved out of town in the outskirts of town, city limits to start with, and she gave up that location and she moved to Canton. Calendars, okay? You all may have noticed in the back of the package, the council people here, on your package, this is the calendar that we got, man, it was wonderful, okay? And all the little notations in there where it says Solid Rock Church, Radio Club, Girl Scouts, Cub Scouts, these are all the activities that go on in the Witches Hat Museum area and in the Freight House. Nobody's ever seen that before. That's all the little activities that go on every month in our historic village. This is a copy of the November calendar made by the city for me. This is a copy of the November calendar made by the city for me, because I like to have a copy. And this one come out pretty good. And Linda Ross made me another one and stuck it in my door. And this is one that the city, that she would recommend that the city might adopt, okay? With nothing on it, if you want to fill in your own blanks with all of the current dates. So these calendars are very helpful to me. I keep them on both walls. Anyway, I want to move on. Okay. Thank you and praise for all the members, outgoing members that we've had here, and they've done a wonderful job over the years, and I thank them very much for their dedication, especially Harvey. The knowledge about budgetary matters and Oakland County finance that Harvey brought to table is pretty well hard to match, okay? But let's see if we can make up with aggressive and creative financing in the future, the right path for South Lyon. And also, just one closing thing. I've put in a lot of time, Mr. Attorney, okay, this is to you. In the past, I've been notified I can't speak at Planning Commission, Parks and Recs, Historical Commission. I can't speak or participate, as I have in the past. Some things, I had my own projects with each commission, Parks and Recs and Historical. Some things, I put my own money into it, my own time and labor. I've been informed I can't do this anymore, now that I'm on council. I'd just like a clarification from you, okay? I've been told I can sit in the meetings, okay, but I can't speak, and I can't participate with some things other than as a general member. And the Parks and Recs, for instance, I've done a lot of informational work for them, because as Julie Zemke said years ago, "If you don't tell them, Carl, they'll never know." Where Andover Park, Columbia Park, Volunteer Park, and McCanney Park, and these other parks, the membership in the Parks and Rec Commission is mostly ladies who are schoolteachers, at this time anyway, and they don't get around too much. They don't see things, okay? And I provide them with information, and I've done some projects. Now, is there any way I can continue to do some of this work with these groups? Or do I have to totally cease and desist and just add some paperwork and turn it in and leave them alone?
There should be a way for you to continue that. I would like to talk to you about what you've heard, what you've been told, what you'd like to do, and figure out a way to make sure that you can continue to do some or all of this work.
Okay, we'll set a some time for you and I to spend a little time together to work on this, because I've benefited those people, and I've helped them out, okay? And especially with historical background and look at the... The time capsule I helped them find, okay? The DPW guys told me, "Okay, Carl, this is a great victory. You found the time capsule. But from here on in, it's all Parks and Recs. You're out of it." I accept that. I'll go along with it, okay? The Rock, okay, these different things. I'd like to be able to continue on working on these types of things for our community. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much, people.
Thank you, Carl. Rose?
I'd just like to thank everybody that voted, everyone that went out and made a difference in our senior community for electing me on council, and let's move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rose.
Maggie?
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank all the candidates for their efforts in this past election. It is not easy putting your name out there. It's incredible what people will say about you on Facebook, just because they don't want you to get elected. It has nothing to do with your credentials, but it can get nasty out there, and you just have to ignore the noise and consider the source. That's what I always tell people. Look at who's saying the nasty stuff. Look at them, look at their life. Look at how they're living, and you'll see why they're saying what they're saying. So what I would like to do is to thank all those individuals that worked hard, that came forward and wanted to make a commitment to the city. I think, you know, you're not done. You're not... I think there's plenty of opportunities for you to get involved if you want to continue to stay involved with the city. The doors are open. There's plenty of opportunities. And I don't think there's a... I don't want to misspeak, but I don't think there's one of us up here that would discourage anyone from stepping forward and wanting to participate with the city and moving it forward. I'd like to welcome all the new council members tonight. Glenn on his reelection, Carl on your election, Rose on your election. We have two new members. I think they bring an interesting dynamic to council, and I think it's going to be a great journey, because I think everyone is moving forward, and I think it's a problem-solving. That's where we're at, is we have issues and let's solve problems. Clearly, I want to thank our new mayor, who is doing a fabulous job tonight, Dan Pellchat. I don't know if people at home realize it or not, but he understands Robert's role of order very well. He's excelling at it. He's doing great. And he's, just like I'm anticipating, that is the way his career's going to be on city council. He's just going to lead us all to just some great opportunities in the next couple of years. So thank you, Dan, for stepping forward, and we're really looking forward to working with you. I think it's going to be a fun time.
Thank you very much.
You've got a good sense of humor, so we'll get along fine. I think that's great. Next, I'd like to also say that last week in the drizzle, I had an opportunity to run into two DPW workers that were working in the rain. And they were working in Paul Baker Park, and I went over and chatted with them real quickly and just wanted to thank them for their time. I went to extend my hand to thank them, and they wouldn't extend a hand. And I thought, "Oh, my gosh, what did I do wrong now?" And they said we're covered with mud, and yes, they were. They were covered in mud, because they were trenching a line, just the two greatest souls over there in the DPW that worked incredibly hard that day. That is an example of the kind of workers that we have. It didn't bother them that it was raining. It didn't bother them that they had water dripping off their face, or they were covered in mud. They were there to put in that trench and get that fountain ready for next year in Paul Baker Park. Thank you, gentlemen. I need to step over and personally thank you. Next, Big B Coffee is one of my hotspots. I absolutely love it over there. It's a great place. If you haven't been to Big B Coffee, please stop by. It's a great crew over there. I enjoy it. A lot of people on my end of town go there, and it's just a super place. It's glad that we have these little venues throughout the city for people to enjoy. And last, it's a little bit of a belated Veterans Day, but I'd like to thank all the veterans that served in our city. But also, I would like to send a special thank you to the vets that served in Vietnam. I'd like to thank you for your courage. I'd like to thank you for your service. 58,000 of you did not come home. But what I would like to do is to say to all of you, you may not have had a parade, but what I would like to say is, "Welcome home, Vietnam vets. Welcome home. We love you." Other than that, I'd like to thank you for inviting all of us into your home this evening and enjoying the city council meeting of the new council. I'm looking forward to just a great time with everybody. Have a great week, everyone. And I want to send out a special thank you, and a very, very special thank you to John Taylor. So thank you and good night, everyone. Have a good week and good Thanksgiving. Let's move forward.
Thank you, Maggie.
Thank you, Maggie.
Go ahead.
I'd like to thank all the election workers that had, you know, stuck out the whole day, waited late into the evening. Lisa, Judy, all the people at each of the booths. So that was very nice. I wish they had been overworked a little bit more, but it was nice that they stick in there. I'd like to congratulate everybody that prevailed. I'd like to thank everybody that ran. I'm hoping some of them will capitalize on the idea of getting their feet wet now and stay in the arena, because I think some of them are really quality people. The Veterans Day ceremony on Saturday was really terrific, and Rich Perry had done a video, the commander's speech. He made some comments, and the high school had sang the National Anthem. That was very nice. It was kind of funny when you were at the event with all the din of traffic noise and things. I was having a difficult time trying to get a clear understanding of the entire breadth of what his comments had been. Rich's, his video is just perfect. The clarity of the audio and the whole thing was really, really nice, and his comments were really pertinent. I would advise everybody, if you have an opportunity, Channel 19 is the easiest vehicle, but I'm sure that it's going to end up being a YouTube-type of a thing that you can search for. I was also wondering, is anybody doing a summary of the liquor license discussions? No? They are?
As I understand, there will be rudimentary notes in minutes.
All right. I was hoping that... I would just like to get wind of the direction and the concerns and things on even a cursory view of it. So just to have an idea of what the sticking points are and what people see as real advantages moving forward, so...
Did you want a rundown right now, or did you want, like, actual summary?
Well, I was hoping everybody might be able to avail themselves of the information. So if somebody is generating even just some sketchy notes, I think that that's a step in the right direction. But I'd love to hear if you've had something more comprehensive.
Sure, just a quick couple of seconds. We had a variety of different business owners from South Lyon come to the meeting and express concerns that currently the way the liquor license ordinance is written is too restrictive. And that there are, there's a variety of different restrictions that are currently in there that might inhibit their business and may appear not business-friendly and not encourage other business owners to come to South Lyon. And it's important to really promote our downtown. So to have a liquor license that we currently have in place drafted isn't business-friendly. Most of the business owners, or in fact, I think all of them that we've heard from, were not in favor, as it is currently written. They would like to see it closely mirror and echo state law, as opposed to adding an additional layer that we've currently added. Am I correct? Correct me if I'm wrong.
Is that your understanding?
Yes, the business community wanted changes to the ordinance.
Do they seem valid concerns?
Yes, some of them are.
So, I mean, I was kind of surprised that we would try to rewrite the state thing in any... Especially after the food truck situation. You know, I understand that your obligation is to end up creating things that protect the city, but I think that unless there's a real example of vulnerabilities that the city might end up having to suffer, you know, that we should probably rely on that the language is already tailored. Outside of that, I'd just like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you very much. I appreciate your pulling or making the checkbox on my name for the last election. And I look forward to us getting to know each other a little bit better, getting to feel comfortable around each other, having our differences of opinion without having to be hostile about it. I think that's going to end up being quite an improvement, so... Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you, Glenn. I will keep this short and sweet the best I can. I want to start by reiterating what a lot of you others said is, "Thank you so much to our city staff and our volunteers that were there for a long day on Tuesday." We lucked out on some phenomenal weather, all things considered, if you've been here in late November. But that was just about as beautiful a day as we could have asked for, so thank you to all you. I would also like to thank all the other candidates that ran, whether it be for mayor or city council. You know, and this has been brought up in the past, where other communities and news outlets maybe took advantage of us not having a mayor candidate at the deadline and assuming it was a black eye. But just like this city always does, this is a blue-collar town, and by the end of it, we had nine people ready to rock and roll, and that's impressive. And I want to thank each and every one of you for that. I'm very superstitious, so I didn't pre-write anything for this today, because we did not get official word until today, too. But I definitely want to thank my family and my friends and my staff of team that helped me get to this point, and of course, my fiancee, Meredith Peterson. Thank you. You'll get to see this out of me as we get to know each other a little bit. My sports background is, it's hard-wired in me. I tend to be a little bit of a rah-rah guy. This is our team for the next two years that's sitting up here, and we have a fantastic opportunity to continue leading this city down a path that is, I think... I mean, the sky's the limit. We have a lot of great things going for us that other cities do not, and I think we have a great staff and team that can really push us forward. And so on top of that, I can promise you guys this much. I intend on getting better at this every week, and for another lame sports analogy, we get better. The biggest improvement you'll see will be from week one to week two. I promise you that. So on that note, I thank you all very much for being here.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good job.
Great, Dan. Wonderful. We're not going to let you fail. What am I supposed to keep out of this stuff? I don't want every... I don't want every...